Yes.
I always look forward to that.
What do you think, is license getting paid for access not seeing attention?
What did you think of the email?
You're having a hard time too.
I realized I made a snack. You got the shirt. It's insane. There she is. If you don't mind, can I show you? Yeah, we'll wait for the license.
That's great. I'm not late tonight.
You're usually not late.
No.
No, no, they're not late except for last week, but I couldn't get connection.
Gremlins? Arteans?
Internet myself when I say Artesians.
So we are having issues, so I will have more copies than I thought. I think everything, oh, they're still good. So there are some table copies if you want. Uh, that would be great. Oh, you're so welcome.
Okay, if you'll join me in the, you know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. If you've not signed in and wish to do so, now would be the appropriate time. I see you're all present and accounted for today. At this point, I'll accept any agenda modifications. Great. Seeing none, we'll decide to proceed to approving the minutes for the October twentieth council meeting as amended.
Well, Loisa, am I, were these in our pocket? I could I look for them on.
No, no, because I wasn't done with them yet, so, yeah.
Okay. Can I ask that we approved October twentieth at the next meeting, so we have a chance to read them? And just glancing at them, these look very good. I, I was just really hoping we could also record more specifically on the LNI finds, the total of the finds, and maybe it's off here and I'm just skimming it. And also on our airport discussion, there was just discussion about kind of the future of the airport out there a little bit, and after we do this here, again, it might be there, can we just?
Certainly.
Can we wait, just so I can read through?
Certainly. All right, so we'll skip those and go to the November third council meeting minutes. At this point, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve the November third council meeting minutes.
Seconded. Seconded, in the discussion, post group set, uh, post group. Okay, um, public comments from the audience, anyone got anything? Wow, okay, great. Um, community group updates? Great, okay. Flimery budget hearing, ma'am.
Okay, so we had the workshop, um, last Wednesday, and there are just a couple of changes. And once again, I'm not sure what we're gonna do, I probably am gonna have to get new Excel software because we pretty much totally crashed today. So, um, what we're looking at, change. General, um, there are also a little recurling, so we just go to page one, two, three, four. Uh, as far as the very bottom of that page, uh, the changes are that I, instead of putting twenty-five thousand into cemetery, twenty into cemetery, instead of putting fifty into streets, put thirty-five thousand into streets. And then if you turn the page then, um, I also took criminal justice back down to forty thousand because we don't need a very big cushion in that, so, um, that, those were the major changes for the general fund. Um, with the exception of those income changes, I believe there are no changes to cemetery, um, no changes to streets. The airport, I did put in, um, some debt obligation for that, so if you go down to the very bottom of that page that says airport, um, you'll see, or actually just flip that page because that's a different category. It says WSDOT car loan principal and WSDOT car loan interest. Those were not in the original preliminary budget, so now they are. Uh, the fire department has any changes at all. Um, criminal justice is just the difference of the income coming in from the current expense fund, otherwise that's the same. Uh, street levy fund is exactly the same. Uh, the aviation.
I got one question on the street levy fund that was brought up today. Answered, lost it again. Um, for the levy, um, and then you've got chip sealing, and then you've got road repair. Aren't they the same?
Well, not necessarily.
Okay, so the fifty, the hundred thousand, you got it under road repair, shouldn't that go into chip seal?
It just says major street repairs, which is less specific, so you can use it for anything you want to.
But, but if we put it into, into, uh, chip sealing, that's where it goes, right? Because I noticed you had a difference in category numbers.
Right, so if you have, um, if you put it all into chip seal, it's not that you couldn't use some of it for something else. For instance, maybe the chip seal, then it comes back at eighty-seven five or something, and there's twelve five left in there. You could use it for something else. But if you keep it all under major street repairs, that covers it all. It, it doesn't actually make any difference, uh, for the chip seal part of it, but at least we don't have to reclassify for anything else that might be left over to deal. If you seal that it needs to be under chip seal, I mean, it really makes no difference. It has to be according to the plan that either already have approved.
With, with March has.
Yeah.
So if, if we got a contact with the county to do road, to do some road chip sealing for the city, would that affect that, that it was not a line item?
No, it, major street repairs would cover it. Yeah.
It's all in streets.
It's just a slightly less general heading. It just covers anything that you want on that.
I don't know if the county's gonna do it anymore. So if it needs to go on a bid, um, I think we need to get looking at who can do this if we're gonna be bidding it out.
Right.
Instead of waiting till March, get it done before then.
They won't be good anymore. Their bids are only good for so long, and they also have caveats that if the price of, of the materials goes up or down, that they'll change them. So if we get them too soon, we might wind up just getting them all again.
Can't you just arrange it so you get put on the schedule law without giving you a bid?
But they're not gonna put us on the schedule without accepting contract.
But, you know, there, I'm, I'm worried that, because we didn't get it done last year, is that, was that the problem? That we didn't get their signal out for?
No, um, for the project that we were talking about doing, it's more than fifty thousand dollars. So there weren't funds available to do that whole project. So I'm very happy to, maybe it would be good to just get one or two bids just to look at.
That's what I think, yeah.
Okay, certainly we can do that.
And it give us a little bit of fire, uh, margin to.
Yeah, I'm gonna maybe keep it on the agenda every time, just to revisit it to see if we've had any communication that way.
Okay, I can get some bids for reference and.
Because they, I'm sure they make a schedule, they may, must make a schedule out of where, you know, what they're gonna do and where they're gonna go and how much is involved.
They do, so we could tell them that something along the lines of, say, say the bid is ninety-two thousand dollars. If it is within ten percent, you know, we will stay on the schedule. And then they could figure out how to schedule us.
Because, you know, our voters voted and approved the street levy last year, they approved it, but we didn't use it. So I, I think it'd be important for them to see we're actually doing something with their levy money.
Good point. Again, correct your last one, but when you were still there, how about they, the county's kind of backed away from that town, any town they kind of.
And I think that, that's gonna make it more difficult even to get somebody to do it when people are out.
I, I don't know that that's true.
You don't control.
If they're able to get reasonable bids from Shamrock and some of the other banking companies pull, but those, they tend to be like a shorter term bid than some of the other things that we see. They're not good for like three months from the date, they're usually good for thirty days. But, but it at least would give us a ballpark.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I hope.
Okay, I can, have to do that.
And then, and then also keep it on the agenda for each time, just to see how the progress is coming.
Okay. The aviation grant figures have not changed at all. The water fund figures have not changed.
So on the water fund figures, another one, is, uh, the, you change, you transferring the street and water, uh, sewer and water into what, uh, out of your general fund into the water and sewer?
No, we talked about last time, leaving them in the general fund because you can always move that money, but you can't always move the money if it's in water or sewer.
No, at the end of the year, we, we move it.
Right, that's what was talked about, but there's, wait a minute, I'm a little confused.
In the budget, we're taking out and not going into general fund. It comes out of general fund and goes into the water and sewer at the end of the year.
If you decide to do that, in whatever amounts you decide to do that in, but that's a budget amendment at the end of the year.
Yeah, it's at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering if we had to have a motion to do that, or, uh, now, or?
No, so.
Because I really, there's a lot of people that want to see that money go in there.
I understand that. For this year, we still have the budget from last year where we moved it. For this coming year, we left it going into the current expense fund because that is a general fund and it can go wherever it needs to go. So my understanding was that you would start looking at that toward the end of next year to see what balances look like.
This year, we, next year or this year? This year.
No, this year's budget says that money goes into the general fund. If you want to move it after that, you always can. But that, last year's budget already accounted for that. And this is twenty-twenty-six budget.
Yeah, right. So, but the twenty-twenty-five budget, it, it's still in the, in the general fund?
Yes.
So, um, that question part, why can't that be moved over at the end of this year's?
You can if you think that there is an adequate cushion in the general fund to meet all the obligations that the general fund has to meet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, was this the time to ask about the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we were gonna move?
Can we, let's get one, we'll get to sewer.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so the aviation grant figures have not changed at all. Um, the water figures are the same as what we discussed before.
Uh, going back to the aviation figures, I hate to break this up a while, it's not my idea. Um, I was packing the mic and there was three thousand dollars in the fund somewhere that you have that was earmarked for the airport. Can we take that out of wherever you got it in and put it right into the airport fund? And, and then that way the airport fund has a.
Yes, it, it's already, it's already earmarked to do that in the budget. This is the grant fund, so the, um.
Dave under airport, the first line item, restricted balance beginning, that's where that money is. So it's already in the airport.
Okay, so it's already.
Yeah, it's, it's in the airport fund and then it can become undescripted if you choose to, um, use it for airport expenses.
Along with that.
And that is on the list of things to do for a budget amendment at the end of the year.
Which, where does that reflect, I'm sorry, in this?
That's in the regular airport fund, so.
First line item.
Yeah, the very first line is the restricted amount, and if you notice for next year, there's no restricted amount. Anticipating moving that.
If I remember right, when that money was given to the airport, it was specifically to be used for special projects, and not just to be dumped into general operating. Yeah, just for the airport, that's my biggest, yeah, it's still there there.
Yes. Okay, um, so water has not changed at all since our Wednesday discussion. Now sewer, to answer your question, um, Shelley, it still has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferring over to sewer road fund, also known as sewer reserve. You see that sewer starts halfway down the page there, on the next page toward the end, um, it is about the third to last line.
So my question was, is that, I'm referring to my notes from the other day because that's where I made everything. Um, so if, um, it looks like that's being, has that already been transferred? Or were you doing that at the end of the year, a hundred and fifty thousand?
We do that at the end of each year. So it's on the budget amendment to happen at a December sixteenth meeting when we do all the final budget amendments.
So we voted for that last November, I guess I was thinking it was already moved to that fund because we voted for that to happen, why does it wait for a year?
You have to do a budget amendment, and you have to wait until you have sufficient funds to do it, which we probably already do in sewer. Um, but because it's such a large amount, it makes more sense to do it later in the year. It's getting interest regardless of whether or not it's in sewer or in the sewer reserve fund, so it's not like it's doing nothing in terms of income, which is important.
So it's in the sewer fund, it's just, it's just not in the general fund right now, it's in the sewer fund?
Yes.
And now we move it over?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question, if it was giving interest where it was sitting?
It is.
Right now? And then some discussion came up about that hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and I thought you had stated that, that the reserve, and when they go to look at our grants and when we get further projects, that that's not gonna affect one way or another, us getting the grants? And then discussion came up that that might be otherwise, did we find out?
So, uh, we have a nine o'clock meeting tomorrow morning with, uh, Kim Christock or Christock, I'm sure. To talk over some of the factors that affect how they look at our eligibility. So we'll be able to get you exact answers after that.
So now that question will be brought up, what she's talking about in that meeting?
Yes.
So, and they, I just wasn't sure, what, when you brought that up and then after you made a comment to me, that when you, when they go to look at this, the money that's in our sewer reserve, it does or it does not impact, from your experience, it does or does not impact, um, the grant amounts?
It doesn't, but then that's, change, action change, every year they change it, so that's the question she needs to ask that tomorrow. Because, uh, with the money that we have in reserve right now, you could have a catastrophe go down, well pump or whatever, and that money's gone.
Okay. But, so the discussion, so it's in the sewer fund, so discussion came up about buying equipment to look poor, whatever that discussion was about, but it can't, it has to stay in the sewer fund, right?
Right, however, the sewer fund does have to contribute to equipment purchases. So if we buy a truck and we use it for everything, then part of the money that pays for it has to come out of sewer, part has to come out of water, part has to come out of streets, part has to come out of the general fund. And, so that's part of, if I understand your question correctly. It's not that the sewer, the sewer fund doesn't pay for all of it, but neither is it immune from equipment costs, and if there's something that is specifically for the sewer, then it would just.
Okay, well, I just, we voted to put that in the reserve, and I just really feel like that we need to stay true to that. I, I love the idea that by the end of twenty-twenty-six, if we are able to do that again, this year we will have half a million in that account. And that's like a pay-down principle, um, that could do a lot to, to help us as much as a grant or whatever I think. Right, so I, I just would wanna know the appropriate time to have that discussion because I, I, I think it's really important. Also, I, for me, it weighs into whether or not we're going to raise sewer rates. Because if we're, if we're saying we have to raise sewer rates and yet the money that we have isn't spent towards the sewer project, I'm not sure why we're raising sewer rates.
Well, our rates have to be at hardship levels in order to be eligible for the grant funding. So that's an important reason why the rates have to be raised. Uh, so that's part of the conversation tomorrow too, like if, if things go through as Matt explained, I don't know, eight or ten months ago at this point. Uh, and we are able to qualify for hardship rates and depending on what else we're able to qualify for, depending on how we fall income-wise, uh, it could be something that afterwards, if we are able to maybe pay down some of our other loans, you know, like we have little loans for the sewer that could be paid off, then maybe revisiting the question of rates would be a good thing to do at that point. Yeah, because then we wouldn't have to have as many dollars every year to pay off our obligations. But right now, the loans and things work in our favor for getting more favorable financial accommodations from Department of Ecology and other agencies because we already have that indebtedness.
So you picture us having better information by the next council meeting as to, um, vote for these things? And would it be possible for the council members to do this in a real brief after?
Sure, oh yeah, I'm happy to.
Before that meeting, so we can contemplate what, what's in our before we do it. All right, thank you.
But, um, but also to answer your question, for this budget, we also estimated a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer.
So, yeah, I remember you putting that, I think that would really be helpful for us.
Would that be on the sixteenth when we do that?
Uh, yes, the sixteenth is when we do our last budget amendment for the year, so we'll move twenty-twenty-five money. And then next year, um, in December, we'll move twenty-twenty-six money, uh, for that. But if, if the sewer plan is doing really well, sorry, something. Um, you can do it earlier, the thing of it is when you do the budget amendments, that's an ordinance, it has to be published, so like every time we do that, we're paying for publications, et cetera, too. So I try to just do them in January when we move the stuff, that we now know the exact figures from the end of the year. Uh, and then in the middle of the year, to fund the different things that need it, and at the end of the year, to finish moving up everything. And if we need to change our revenues and expenses, if we've had more revenues, et cetera.
Well, just give you an advance note, so the, the water and sewer needs to be transferred to the law funds.
Well, you guys have to figure that out, tell me what you want.
Bring a little noise.
Okay, all right.
And that can be done, what's it, as late as that gray issue that David's talking about, you mentioned it must be four, I'm still a little confused. What's the, what's the latest we can transfer that into that water, that funds back into the water sewer?
Anytime, anytime, yeah. If, the, the reason you would might wait till January is because then you have the end of the year, your big years, you know what your beginning fund balances are, so you have a better idea of where everything stands. So, because we try to budget very conservatively, so our numbers always, in theory, they always look worse, you know, before January, and then in January, um, they usually look a little bit better than what we anticipated.
That makes sense, and we can, and that's true, we do fund transfers all the time, so we can, there's not a restriction on when you can transfer funds, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the sewer debt fund, uh, has been absorbed into the sewer reserve, so that's why that's zeroed out. And that hasn't changed, um, the water reserve numbers have not changed. Um, sewer reserve numbers have not changed. Any, any questions, sorry, I'm kind of zooming, so if you have questions, just stop.
Well, what we got in reserve is gonna really help us. If we can just start paying down what we owe after we get forgiven part, and then pay down what we can, and then make things a little bit more affordable.
I'm certain there's a formula they have that applies.
And also to remember that the, um, forgiven part of the loan, forgivable loan, they do not consider forgivable until the project is completed.
It used to be sixty, but it, but that's all changed now.
We'll make a hit fifty, I think.
So Loisa, if, if we are, let's say we do go ahead, we, um, keep those taxes for water and sewer, back in water and sewer, let's take a water for a minute, with the water, um, is there, are there direct loans directly related to water that we could use that money to pay down one of those loans instead of just putting it into the reserve? Would that be beneficial to us?
Well, we do have one very large loan, that's our USDA loan. And that's the one that's, um, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars every year. Um, and it's, um, it's a long-term loan, it's one of our longest-term loans. I think it was four years when it was originally issued. So if we got to the point where there was enough money in water reserves to do something reasonable, then you could, you could do that, uh, and then they would have to, I would have to ask them how they do that, uh, in terms of the amortization schedule, like will they, do they just apply it to the next payment? You know, what are the rules? I don't know the rules because I would like you all of.
In that, you know.
In advance, right, and so I don't know a hundred percent the answer to that. Um, but considering that our last pump was over thirty thousand dollars, and we, we're anticipating, right now we have around thirty-two thousand dollars of spendable money, and we're anticipating, you know, thirty-seven, I think, by, by the end of next year. Um, it might be a couple of weeks before you want to do that.
Okay.
So there's another thing on that, is Broadway, uh, the waterline running, uh, north and south on Broadway is the old style pipe with the lead joints. The chlorine, as high as it is, it pulls that lead right out of the water. So everybody that's on Broadway gets a higher level of lead. And, uh, so that really needs to be looked at. Besides Steve talked about, uh, getting that line replaced, and, but that line really needs to be changed.
That's one of the things that, uh, will be, I've asked Stephen to find out what is the timeline in which we need to deal with the lead joints, because it's a federal mandate, so there may be federal funds to help with that. So then we'll get a court to help us apply.
Yeah, get them out of them.
So anyhow, but that is definitely part of the landscape.
Loisa, um, on the water loan, can we, could we put money towards a pressable on it?
But I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah, yeah, I think that's what, uh, Shelley was asking about that, and I have to find that out.
Do you not have, to remember the interest rate on that one?
It's very low.
I, I don't, but you know, even one or two percent on a lot of money adds up. Um, and it's, I think that the principal, I think, is still over two million.
Oh, come on.
I think so, so.
That was, it was a huge loan at the time.
Had to.
We had about four hours to decide.
Yeah, what was it used for?
It was at Ingle Street, most of it. Yeah, it was a lot, it was a big project, and like I said, we had four hours to decide, and if we didn't decide yes, it was going someplace else.
Yeah, and that's true, it happens, I see it all the time, they say no, and it goes somewhere.
Talk about it under your head, right?
Exactly.
So, um, the Department of Ecology Waste Treatment Facilities Planning Grant, um, those numbers are the same, there's very little left, you know, that carries over into next year. Uh, cemetery endowment is the one that the city manages, and those numbers have not changed from last time. Other, I have questions.
I think it's early in this, with point oh nine, is there, is there a line for point oh nine that is set aside?
It's in the, in the beginning part, it's in the current expense fund, and, and I just put in zeros because we don't know.
Well, and does, it, it, does it not seem like, like the first year we all started together, that there was like ten thousand in there? Or we were budgeting, and I don't know if that was, I don't know this because we had already decided.
We'd already decided.
To work on one project.
Yeah.
Okay, because I was just wondering if it wouldn't be good to just go ahead and have some money in there?
Um, if we don't have a project in mind, then it's.
It's, we're so.
Maybe a little bit early to do that.
Well, I do know that, you know, we've been talking about the golf course, um, Pete's already been in touch with the court, we know that, and I don't know if that's a match-type situation.
Yeah, it'd have to be a, a contribution, I think was attempted.
But that's not point oh nine.
Something that may really, the matching.
The oh nine?
Yeah, I mean, for the port, do they have, oh nine, I don't know if it's matching for that. Does the, does the port have a match?
Not as, I don't know what you, what you're talking to the port about, but for the oh nine grants, the ones we've been getting, like for the library and for city shop, they're about a twenty-five percent match.
A twenty-five percent?
And that, that's, you, you, there's a lot of in-kind things you can do. Labor counts, um, your own equipment counts off of that, so.
We're talking about remodeling of the, um, of the, at the golf course. And, um, the port, they only have substantial amount of money. I wouldn't say require, um, matching. I don't think they do.
Not for that. I don't believe so for those. Although, if you remember in the paper last week or two weeks ago, when Rosalia got the monies for their RV park, they had, they had to come up with a match.
Yeah.
To say you have to. Usually, they're not just in the process of just giving us a bunch of money.
No. And they will, if he needs X dollars, they need a portion of that, and they gotta come up with the rest, so that's true.
Well, um, I wanted to ask about two other accounts then. Um, one, is, there's an, is there, there's an account in here for new machinery, right? It is for the new equipment.
Yes, there is. Um, there's not a lot, there's not a lot in it. Let me think, um.
I think it's six thousand, five thousand.
Five or six thousand, yeah.
So when we, would you remind me, I think you already answered this, but when we bought the street sweeper, that was a accumulation of a few years?
Yes.
Replaced with.
So, so what's in there would be normal for a year, the five to six, so we, we want to keep working on building that back up if there's a purchase.
Right.
Suit or something.
Right. And so that's kind of where the, there's a lot of discussion and more to be had about if we get these buildings sold, you know, would some of that go into a facilities fund, would some of that go into equipment? You know, what have you. So you could decide that at that time if you wanted to, something to, an equipment fund. But that is normally what we do, is five or six thousand dollars a year.
Okay. Well, I think the max of what we do would be good, since we know it's coming. So if it's, if, if, if six is the max, then I would suggest we do six. Um, I don't know where it is, or, or what's in that.
I think it's in, um.
That's why you wanna keep that general fund healthy, in case we have something major come up, we might lose access to that.
So, yeah, the only equipment replacement fund is free equipment replacement. And that has a five thousand dollar budget for next year. So.
Um, okay. And then the last one, I, one, we, we discussion about, where, where was it about, we got in discussion about the roof on this building.
Oh, yes.
And was, was that under, I think there's seven hundred dollars in that account. I just don't remember which account that was.
Was it three?
There's, well, there's, there's a little bit of money in water and sewer and because, because the shop is used for all of those different funds.
Oh, I found it. It's, uh.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of contribution toward that.
It's pretty little, loving on my hand, I remember the one, um, the one from the other night. Um, uh, the five-three-four, four oh one, five-three-four members. It was down towards, yeah, we have, you're budgeting seven hundred in there. I, I'd like to see us put a little more money in there. Um, I, I really think we need to consider improvements. I, I, or, I don't know, must we wait till we see what's gonna happen with the, um, solar panels? But I, I just can't imagine them, I'm looking at this elementary school again with those new solar panels, just can't imagine how the condition of our roof is gonna support those kind of panels. So I, I, unless, unless they're, this is a full-on grant, right, that's putting the solar panels?
It is a full-on grant.
To the tape for the new roof too, to hold up the solar panels?
I don't think so, but yeah. Uh, no, um, I think there's seven hundred dollars in three different funds for that. Um, how would you think about, be putting it on the agenda for early January when we have, when we know what our end-of-year balances are? And then maybe adjust.
And maybe a suggested amount, if, if you, once we'll probably know more about the solar panels and what might be involved, or will we not?
Well, we won't know for a while, because it, it'll, it, I don't think it was a whole year that we were getting pushed off, but it was going to be longer than like six weeks or something before we knew. He was putting us into the next round, but he didn't say when that closed. So I could find out.
Okay. Well, if solar panels are not, I don't really think we need to start planning for a new refund. If we're planning to be, this is our city, our, our city home for in shot for years to come, I think that we need to start saving up to invest in it's long term.
Well, that was kind of, um, just me, I was hoping that, uh, if we got these other buildings sold, that that would be part of a facilities fund because we don't have a facilities fund for any of our buildings, and, you know, they all have roofs and, yeah.
But that'll go fast.
Yes.
Too, if we're not budgeting.
Now, Stephen indicated, he was gonna review the roof and do some minor repair on it.
Right.
Uh, that is probably take care of the whole problem, but, uh, that was my suggestion. And I would think that if they're gonna put some, if they did put solid tiles on the roof, they have to have a structural engineer to see if they're cool, I would think, before they put them up. What do you think?
I'm sure they would.
I would think, yeah. I mean, it's a good question, but I'm sure it would probably take a year and a half.
Those, those were all my budget questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephen, other questions? How is observation?
So we have the first December meeting to discuss this further, and then this is approved with the second December meeting, or?
You can approve it anytime after the final budget hearing until the end of the year.
Right.
Uh, I'd be super grateful if you would approve it.
Right. Yeah, oh, yeah, sure, sure. But just so we should, if we have questions, we should be contacting you on, please to study it.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Great, thank you. Then whenever do we discuss giving you a new Excel program?
Yes, that would be, uh, we have actually spent a little bit of money on IT to try and figure out what is going on with our Excel. It won't, I wonder what it's supposed to, it won't print, it won't, sometimes it just quits, and today, um, it's a terrible time, you know, for Excel to not even, I can't even save it to PDF at this point. So, uh, I'm a little concerned about losing more data. So it's, we have to do something soon, so.
Well, is this in conjunction with the word updates that happened last month? Is that creating a problem?
Well, the problem's been ongoing for longer than that. Um, it was going a little bit better, but, um, the, the gal who does our, um, IT work, not, you know, reloading it, doing all the things you would normally do, it's still a lot work currently. And I don't, I don't know what the problem is.
Question is it hardware or software? That's always the question.
Software, it's a software issue.
Not, not hardware.
No.
Something got scratched out and.
Something is not working right, and so, um, anyway, it's becoming more pronounced.
So how much it will be that you?
I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out for you. We do have a little bit left in operations. Um.
Cause you, you gotta get that going.
Well, I, yeah, I'm very concerned at this point in time about losing.
You may have to email us to get approval on cost or whatever.
Well, it, it will not be opened back for the threshold.
It'll be in the next, no.
Um, but, yeah, it looks likely that we'll be ending the year okay in operations, so I will look into it tomorrow. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead and finish business. Um, union contracts, what are you doing?
I, at this point, um, they're still ongoing, uh, no change. I just wanna make the point that, remember, we mentioned earlier, the union pushed the meeting to early December. That was their call. And so we're, we're having a meeting in December, negotiated well, so we don't know much until early December. That was, so we're working with the unions best we can, but at this point, no real change, ongoing.
So on that right there, um, did you get a notice on what they, they asked if you had a notice on it?
Yes, I did.
Um, did you answer him?
No.
Need to answer him, like, cause it's tw- second or third. It's one of those two, second or third.
I think I did second.
Cause he was looking for an answer from you.
Okay. Old City Hall sale.
Uh, we had talked a little bit about, um, whether or not the next time was advertised, if you wanted it to be advertised with a floor price for the Old City Hall to encourage people to, then they would know how much at least they had to get in order to be able to buy it, um, and without that somewhat questionable, like, bird wasting of time. So, uh, there was no decision made the last time it was discussed, so I'm just putting that before you.
So I, I, can we put the floor on it? Because I thought they're the same.
Uh, well, I, what is the, is there an absolute yes or no on that?
Yeah. I think before, I just advise a lot of times with you, wherever your member lives, sometimes just you leave that confidential because you wanna get the, obviously, the highest bid you can afford, but you also wanna get at least fair market value for it too, so.
So you said you can put up.
Yes.
Okay, you don't try to.
Yes, you can.
Well, then I think we should. I mean, I, I think that, that if, if what came in so far is way below, do we need to vote on that, or?
And, you know, I heard, had a question, because on the way it was advertised, it said had to come up, had to pay in full within forty-eight hours, correct? Or twenty-four? Two hours?
Yeah.
And I think that presented a bit of a hurdle for somebody. And so that's why they all were thinking low, 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 because that's what they have maybe in their checkbook. If it, you know, if it's up in the dollars that we were hoping to get, that's gonna probably require some movement of money at some point.
I would think so. Two hours would be.
Yeah, and I understand why it's out there, right?
Well, it's a cash, you pray out for bid, and you assume they have money in hand, or you.
Right. And so how would we, how should we have? In order to make this as appealing to people as possible, should, should there be a twenty-four hour, should there be a, or, or not? Or, or do you just say no, it's a cash sale?
Well, I think it's gotta be a cash sale. Um.
I can, I can understand why, why you would put that there, because then somebody jumps in and thinks they have it, and then they can't come up with the money, and now you're back to square.
Yeah, you're back to square one, and you don't wanna be in a position, I don't think the city wants to be in a position where they're trying to collect money over time either. I think it's just wanna sell it, be a cash sale, and be done with it.
Do you, do you think that detters from getting the, well, I don't know what other way you'd do it. You know, you could say, yeah, we'll.
The other way would be a, a private sale, whereas if you have, you know, someone, because you, you know what the fair market value is gonna be, as long as someone can find out, why are you at a private sale, I guess that's one way to do it.
Recently cut close, and, yeah. So council, what do you wanna do?
Well, I have a question for Eric. So this might be different, it was an auction, but my family had some farm land that we had to sell on behalf of my mom a few years ago. And I remember, it was through Booker's or, or, yeah, Pollock's, and, um, the, they had to put down the deposit, if they won the bid, they, um, had to put down a pretty good, um, I think like a twenty, thirty thousand dollar deposit. And then I think they had a number, X number of days to work out the financing with their bank to go ahead and have it paid. And I don't remember that, but would that be doable?
I don't think that's an idea at all, and I, I could just change the ordinance around, I suppose. I think the way it is right now, it's just you get paid within a couple of days. I've done that before, but if.
Do, let me ask you this, if they can't come up with the funds, do they lose their earnings money then?
That's how we probably would.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was the case in their situation. So that you had to be very serious. You couldn't just like try it out, bid your, your neighbor, you didn't like it, and.
Yeah. And that's really fair, because that, to me, then they can come up with the funding, you know, if they really wanna pay, come up with the funding. So I think that would be good, one of your choices.
Do you think a sealed bid is more, I mean, I'm not in the business, is more, um, clean than a, than actual courthouse bid?
Yeah, well, I mean, a courthouse bid usually, yeah, well, I guess, I don't know. I've only done sealed bids. Courthouse bids I usually do when it comes to foreclosures. Things like that. This case, it's just a, a sale, and a sealed bid is, it seems like it's kind of the most, um, if you don't have a buyer directly, it seems like a sealed bid is kind of a fair way, a good way, a clean way for the city to ensure it's giving a fair market value for that.
And you'd say in the bid debt, you know, twenty percent down or whatever it may be, the balance due in thirty days. So you'd have to write that up.
Let, okay, and let me ask you this, what is the legality of, say we put in X amount of dollars as, as a minimum, okay, and they don't match that, okay? Can you take the highest sealed bid and then negotiate maybe? And, or do you have to go back out?
No, I think in that, yeah, I go back out, I think, you know. If, if someone has, you take the highest sealed bid, um, and it's not what you want, or if it's below what, what it is, I think you just have to call it, you just have to go back out again.
See, my auction situation, courthouse debts, if it's a hot property, you have potentially get more, but also usually less. But when you're still bidding, it's a gamble, if you really want it, you tend to put more on it so you don't lose the property.
Yeah, if you get a live auction even, if no one shows up, then it's like.
Yeah.
They are.
I guess we should have had it for fireworks auction, if it would have done.
Yeah.
You know, I kind of recommend setting the bottom at one hundred and two thousand, and a minimum of twenty-five percent down payable within four hours, and balance due in thirty days, and fail to come up with the balance, you lose your down payment, period. That's fair to us, that's fair to them, because most people that have bid on that have already got the money sitting in their bank account or their back pocket.
Or should you?
So they're not really, probably not gonna have to chase money. And in fairness to the city, we can't keep putting bid notices out. And like with the last one, they came in way under on one bid. We can't keep doing that, because we're not going anywhere. If we wanna sell the thing, let's set the floor. Let's set a twenty-five or even thirty percent down within so many hours. Cause then they're gonna put that down on there if they won the bid, and they're gonna have the balance within, say, thirty days. But they also know that if they don't have the balance, that money that they put down stays with the city, they forfeit it. That's fair to the city, that's fair to the buyer. They understand those terms when they submit their bid. And with a sealed bid like we did on the airport, all of them didn't work, we had to completely redo it and go back out for bid, which is the legal proper way to do that.
So what, we would be changing, that we'd be putting the minimum bid and the terms of the memory.
Right.
That's how we would change it from what we had.
And they need to understand whenever their down payment is, has to be paid in so many hours. And then if they don't come up with the balance in thirty days, they forfeit the money they deposited.
Yeah, it'll have to be the base, so you establish a base. And then if they, if, if you're, if you're a sealed bid, you're talking about a sealed bid, then if they go over that, then whoever has the highest bid gets.
Well, they also understand penalties unknown if they don't have the money.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be an incentive for them to have the money.
And, and let's face it, you're not gonna go to auction and have money.
Okay, so I wonder, I don't maintain motion at this point.
Well, do we have to discuss the floor and separate the keeping, or is that, wasn't that?
I don't have to.
It's cause it's out now.
Yeah.
Listen, are we talking twenty, so like if it's twenty-five percent down, it's twenty-five percent of the highest bid, not the floor price.
Right, twenty-five percent of the high bid.
Of the bid, yeah.
Okay, so are we clear on, on the motion that is about to be presented?
Is thirty, thirty days too long or too short?
No, that's fair.
That's probably without, right?
Cause there's already got a big chunk of change in our pockets, so.
So, no motion?
I'll, I'll accept my, are you gonna make that motion?
I can make a motion to set the minimum bid at a hundred and two thousand, the floor. And the winning bidder has to pay within, uh, four hours, twenty-five percent down of their winning bid, balance due in thirty days. And also that if they don't come up with the balance in thirty days, they forfeit their deposit.
I'll second that.
Okay, have been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All's fair is that?
I am.
opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Motion passes seven zero, okay? All right, cool.
Do we need a resolution for that?
Yeah, I'll I'll get you a resolution.
That's your homework, period.
That's my homework, yes.
See what happens, you show up.
Yeah.
You get work, right? All right, okay, Jax, let me hear your resolution, twenty-five dash zero seven.
Uh, when I was doing the minutes, um, I realized that the motion to accept the one percent increase in um property tax had failed, but there was no motion to accept the resolution with zero percent property tax, so we need somebody to to do it.
I'll make the motion to accept resolution twenty-five zero seven for no increase in tax.
Then move, seconded, any more discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution twenty-five dash four seven passes. New business, J U B update and payment request. Tim E. Key, come on up, Tim. Welcome, Jax, welcome.
Paul, thank you. Uh, this really isn't much of an update, it's pretty much the same information except where there is a pay request, a contractor pay request that's being, has to be approved, we did not, we do not have an invoice on for this, this period. Uh, but in terms of the project itself, we had last time talked about trying to do a patch, there's a little divot area, a little low spot out there, but we've been working with the contractor, we haven't had a great stretch of weather to get this done, so I think being that it's getting colder, the weather's not getting better, we're gonna end up preferring the fix to next spring. The contract has to stay open anyway, um, and there's gonna be some pavement markings, and then this this patch, this will give us a winner to kind of monitor it and make sure it's not gonna get worse, or if it is gonna get worse, then we know that the fix in the spring will be a little bit more substantial, and then we'll get that, we'll get that fixed then. So I, we were hoping to get something on it before the weather, but we've been really struggling trying to find a window, and then looking at the products that we kind of identified, there's really not, uh, would be right on the threshold of uh, the weather, temperature, moisture conditions to apply to the product for the manufacturer. So those are the things we've been challenged with, and so the update really is we're, we'll look at the pavement again in the spring, we'll get a fix out there at that point, along with the pavement markings that we have to do anyway. So that's, that's the project specific updates, and then in front of you is a contractor pay request, so there'll be money held out to make sure that work gets done properly in the spring.
I'll dig a patch in. I'll dig a patch in.
About the size of a car, so if I, I.
It's not as big as this area right here.
It's, yeah.
It's about three or four feet wide and about ten feet long.
You can't torture on that.
You probably can, but there's not a lot of products that say to do that, so it's really, you're kind of deviating from manufacturer uh recommended installation techniques, there's probably a product that we could do it with, but it would be, again, it would be borderline with the temperature, it'd be kind of akin to a cold patch where you're just gonna throw it on there and then fall apart and have to fix it next year, being that it's an airport though, with the fog concern, I would know that would threaten.
Keith, the stuff we're looking at, even if we develop, there's a couple of small cracks in this, I'm gonna call it a divot. The this new patch stuff that they're gonna put on, it would seal it permanently anyway. So it's a permanent fix that will probably outlast the runway, so I'm not too worried about going through the winter with it. It'll give us a chance to see what the effects of water are, and come spring, they can patch it and then it's done.
Good, and there's not any impact from from playing landy on it.
No, it's about five feet from the edge or ten feet from the edge of the runway.
If they're doing that, they gotta be nervous.
You were thinking kind of whoop. At least way on the edge.
How much is this amount?
What do you feel?
Uh, sorry.
Is it, it's on him?
Four sixty-three.
Four sixty-three, so I can do that, ninety-seven, ninety-seven.
And it's, so, and this comes out of the grant?
This this is grant, I believe it's ninety percent, ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five percent of that is grant from the state and then the five percent match.
Okay, and this is paying, this, so it's four hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy, this is paying for?
That's all, bas- basically the whole project, up to date minus the this this work that we're talking about different to the spring, yeah.
And that's the last part of it then?
Correct, so a majority of the bills will be paid with this, and then um Mike is gonna get a hold of the state and just give them a status update and say, hey, we're gonna carry over to next spring, so we get the rest of the work done. But that, there's been, there's more, this amount is covered by the grant and then your local.
I'll take care of that update tomorrow.
Okay, accept the motion? Nobody wants to spend that much money?
I will motion that we um didn't pay this amount.
Then move, is there a second? Game seconded? Got a man? Any more discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Great, Merry Christmas.
Well, it's not going in my pocket.
Somebody's gonna, somebody will be happier.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Tim. Okay, we got the sheriff's contract.
Yes, so uh the sheriff's contract is fourteen years, starting at January one of twenty twenty-six. And it's, it's a continuation of the current contract that we have, let's see, there is a two percent increase for twenty twenty-six, which brings that year's total to fifty-four thousand nineteen dollars, and then there is a second two percent increase for the following year, uh, twenty twenty-seven, which would bring that total to fifty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars in twenty twenty-six. And that is for the twenty hours a week.
So they're going up two percent a year?
Yes.
And when, was that, did you have that two percent in the budget numbers?
I did, I was there exactly.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the contract renewal with the sheriff's office.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, any more discussion?
Just, you're happy with, I mean, you see, you see them more than we do probably.
I hope not. That's never a good thing, okay? You know, in conversation, I think they've got a real good deal of the polls as to what's going on here, they all know our bad actors, um, they know, and they know we have concerns. Uh, they are, um, they always answer the phone calls when I have them about concerns, and they always get back to me with reports on the, on how they dealt with the concerns, so. It's been a great, I I think it's been a great deal for us, I think. I know Medical Aid got away from local cops several years ago and went with the sheriffs, and that's not a, been a, the comment I've heard in a meeting or two was, don't ever give up your police, but um, if you look at the service we're getting, would probably cost us double what we're getting now if it was just us, at least, and we.
It's a hundred thousand officer anymore.
Pardon?
About a hundred thousand dollars an officer, the cost total.
Sure, yeah, and I understand we're only taking twenty hours, you know, but um I don't, I don't think that they sit there and go, well, let's see, we've, we're, we're out of our twenty hours, so we're not gonna go up there and run radar on this Kudo football game, okay? I think they they cover what has has to happen, and um they're not real um picky, not real tight about that. I think we get as much as we can, as much as we can afford, we're not gonna get officers up here after eight o'clock Kudo football game, but uh we will get them up here at eight o'clock on a Sunday morning, right?
Agreed.
So, so anyway, unless you guys have heard anything else, you know, we ran a thing out there to see if they, if the citizens would approve for more police, and it was about, the response was about fifty-fifty.
Would you see a patrol, I walked and I seen a patrol.
Sometimes you don't see them too because you're driving totally unmarked cars.
Yeah, I was wondering if my eye or is it smart?
But sometimes if they have a problem up here to deal with, they'll show up. I've seen them a couple times, I've gone, where did that car come from? Then you see county license plates on it, so.
I think the patrol pretty good. And the officers got a real investment is into the city, they know what's going on.
They do, the only, only comment I would make there is just reassure the public, I've asked, their role is not to enforce city ordinances, they do not do that, and that's in the contract here as well.
Right.
They have it.
They never know, yeah.
But they don't do, they don't, and we don't, we don't enforce the ordinances.
Right, okay, so this, I'm gonna accept the motion to approve it, or did we?
Yeah.
That's what I thought we did, we've been hammering this so quick. Oh, we did not vote?
No, yeah.
Okay, all those who favor the motion that says we accept the con- contract as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we now. All right, next. Oh, here we go, um, Framework Critical Areas Contract.
So this, this is the firm that was approved to apply for our critical areas update grant, and that came through, and.
And how much is that gonna be?
Uh, it's twenty thousand dollars over two years.
And it, and that's a grant, right?
That is one hundred percent grant, uh, and they distribute it ten thousand dollars at a time, so each year is when they do that. And then if you go to their exhibits towards the back, they kind of break down what they anticipate for the first year, and I also spoke, um, oh my gosh, I think it's Jason, forgive me if I'm wrong on that, I spoke with the gentleman, um, from Framework, and we had talked about them working on things above and beyond just the critical areas ordinance and the timeframe for that. Uh, and he said really would be better to do that at about this time next year to work that in.
I I got a question on that, is he gonna include the airport in with this, the study? Because that's our property out there too.
Well, if there are critical areas issues having to do with it, he will. If we have other things that we want for him to look at, because he thinks that the twenty thousand dollars is more than what the city needs to only look at the critical areas update, um, then he would, would want input from the councils. But you have to decide what you want to do, because there's not enough to do a full comprehensive plan.
Well, I should take a buzz look at the airport, see what's out there that, you know, need to hit with, because it is a critical area in some places, wetlands and things, so I think the airport needs to just a summary of it maybe? Not a extensive summary, you know, but just something where Mike can work with on that.
I'll make sure that the people at Framework are including their important critical areas.
Do you see, do you need to do the same thing for the golf course?
The golf course does have critical area, if you wanna do it.
But I mean, is that something we would like to especially?
Yeah, that would be good too.
They also have the copy of our last critical areas update, so.
I haven't looked at both places.
Well, so would you remind me what what are some of our critical areas, and so I looked through this to try that, I was looking for a list that I.
It's pretty great, isn't it?
I know, you're now supposed to ask me that.
Sorry.
Uh, so I don't, I don't know the answer to all of that, but we do have a critical areas ordinance, and I believe it has to do some, like with the the banks of the creek, I mean, if we have our wetlands, some shoreline management too, but the critical areas overlap some, so.
Especially under the railroad bridge.
Yeah, maybe I could uh forward the last ordinance to everybody, so but I think, I don't think most people were on this council the last time we had to do this, so I can.
And another one is over there, as you're going to Oakdale with the bridge there, where our beaver has his house in there and everything, that's a critical area, that's true.
I guess I'm not fully understanding what we mean by critical.
It's, it's a wetlands, and ecology says you do not own the water, they own the water, state does. And so even if there's water flowing through in the area, uh, twelve months of the year, that's considered a landman, a water management area.
So what is the difference between that and the the shoreline, because I remember when the shoreline people came here, with that very extensive.
It's pretty much the same. It's management of waterways.
So do they work and partner together, or is it just redundant to what?
This one here, this one here is for the city to say, okay, these are the areas that are critical, and uh then if we get an update for shoreline management, then they would use this information.
I think also part of the difference is that this is part of what most big cities would be doing, a full comprehensive plan. So this is considered planning for us, whereas the other one is not considered planning.
So I think under, they have the uh, the Growth Management Act is over a thing enough, and we've been counting off the out of that, but part so, um, unlike Spokane, kind of sort of bigger counties, the Growth Management Act doesn't, mostly doesn't apply to cities in Wyoming County. But under that Growth Management Act, every city has to have a critical areas ordinance, I think is what that was, and that kind of has to do with, and you put it in the zoning code, it gets updated every so once in a while, that has to do with like developing areas, when a building, stuff like that, yeah. Whereas Shoreline Management Act is like creeks and waterways and stuff like that, or that you have to protect those, and a lot, a lot of times that comes up when, you know, developer that wants to come in and put in like a housing development or something like that, because for the shore, they have to, there's certain criteria they have to meet um for that, but the critical areas where there's a thing, and that's probably what this is, I'm guessing, is that it's.
Yes.
Yeah, to help you uh just stay in compliance with that.
When you go to city things, Growth Management Acts are huge things for a lot of workshops and stuff, and.
Well, it's really protected.
Yeah, way more on the other side than on this side, I mean, we're, we're fortunate that we've got gaps and areas for expansion, we don't infringe on a lot of stuff, so anyway, okay. Yep. So we're gonna uh approve um, we accept the Critical Drivers Contract, Contract.
I'll come over.
Pete moves, is there a second? Mike's second. Discussion, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, great. The elective officials training.
The areas and elective officials training coming up on December sixth, when you want to put something else?
Yes.
You know, you know, a few weeks ago, but um to remind people about that, and it gets a Sunday. Uh, it's, it's, you can do it in person at Airway Heights, um, or everybody could gather and do it online, but that's a lot harder to do. We can't really go online on our own in our own home, or do we have to be? I think you can go online in your own home and do it.
This is required by who?
You have to do it every four years, um, at least Washington State requires it, uh, as an elected official, so. Are you coming up on four years?
You did it two years ago, and when you, it wasn't in Fairfield two years ago, so those who went there probably did.
Two years.
Yes, yes, it was. Uh, yes, you don't have to take it again if you did it two years ago, but it's really good to take because it's hard to remember everything, that they go over there so much, um, anyhow. So it is coming up on December sixth, and you can do it in person, and also do it online. You would have taken a good part of that, but there's more, there's more of it on on these registered trainings.
Now, who wants to get in the group, where would you take it?
I, I would highly encourage us to take it in person.
It's pretty good, it's.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's very important to go and, no, let me ask you this, and hypothetically, do our parks board, do newly elected officials have to, should they be attending stuff like this?
Yeah, I think it applies to every municipal officer, they have to take training open public meetings and public records, and all that stuff, so.
In lieu of recent Parks and Rec situations around, our people go do that, right?
I would, I don't, I don't represent, but yeah.
Well, I'm just hypothetical.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll talk, more about this, well, we won't, we won't be again before?
No, we won't.
No, we won't.
We won't, all right.
So if we wanted to do it in a group, where would you go?
Airway Heights.
Oh, otherwise you'd do it where?
Online. Online.
Okay, okay.
And so I can register each person.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, so it's a... I, I don't know, I'd have to look again. Uh, I don't know if it's Tuesday or not, but it's a, it's a most of the day thing, and they eat lunch.
Oh, we'll have to go again.
It helps, right?
No, but I, I, I'll go, I'll make the answer if you want to know that. And then you'll send us more information.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, sometimes the conversation during the break time with different officials is because it's as valuable as what we're getting online. So I'll go with, yeah, okay, alright. Uh, financial policy information, ma'am.
I have a, an email in to, um, the Center for Government Innovation about if they have anything specifically that would help us write financial policy. And I didn't see anything specifically from the publications that I could see, but I'm sure they have to have some kind of resource that would help us to write financial policy. I also have, um, example policy from, I think it's Fairfield. And I'm sure that we could get examples from Emada C2 as far as that goes, but I, I haven't gotten in from directly back from the Center for Government Innovation, plus through S A O.
So what kind of things are we talking about?
Well, we had, it came up when we were talking about, uh, the, like, you even asked about equipment rental, etc.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the...
Right, and, and so, like, for instance, like, we have things that we do here, but we don't really have a policy for them that's formal. Like, for instance, um, anything over, uh, three hundred dollars, I run by the mayor, you know, as far as buying that. Uh, and then anything, it's typically around five thousand dollars that over that, the mayor would run that by all of you. But if it's five thousand dollars or under, and it's part of the budget, et cetera, then the mayor would be in charge of that. It's not very often that we come up against that kind of thing. It would be for things like equipment rental plus supplies, something like that.
Very clear policy.
It helps, yeah.
So you're, so you're working on this, okay. I think that's great. I was gonna ask about a policy for that, so, great.
Okay. Creating Engineering and Consulting Payments Request. Max. Now, this is, I read the invoice right, this is for the industrial park area, the well?
This is for the small water system and plant update. Uh, and so this part of that is two thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. And then there are the two invoices from Wetter and Associates. So one of those is for forty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, and the other's for forty thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And so these are the people who, they, they drill, they test well, they found water. It's not a gushing well, but it's enough. Uh, so then the next thing that they'll be coming to talk to all of you about is, um, doing some sort of, like, uh, wellhouse and retention, like water tower or something like that for up there. So it's, it's good news, I wish it was, you know, thousand gallon a minute well, but it's not, right, so...
So how much was it?
It's only thirty-five.
Really?
Yep. So, but that's enough to, you know, if it's going most of the time, to keep a reservoir.
But it's not fire suppression, though.
No. And it would affect, um, at that level, it would affect the kinds of businesses that can be out there if they need more water for manufacturing. And they're also talking about whether or not they would do a secondary site to see about water.
I think if they were to do, how, how deep did they go, they say?
Four hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, I know, it was more than four hundred, it was...
So they would have to go down to a thousand feet level to get down, they're good aquifer. Because they can do it, it's, you just gotta go through that part of the salt. So, but if there's any industries that come in there that will require that, then they would help pay for that more than market comes in.
Yeah, that could be a little...
I don't have all that information.
That could be a limiting factor too, so, it'd scare them off.
So the port is paying for the, they paid for the drilling of the well, we're paying for the study?
We're, we are paying the bills, and they reimburse us a hundred percent.
Okay, okay, um...
Alright, that's a, that's a good deal.
And that's at the port.
Yeah, you're just wrong, yes.
The first, they're gonna put down deeper.
I have not had a conversation as to why they stopped where they did. I think they were pretty happy about getting it there. But...
See what we get in the future.
And they do have probably a reservoir out there, so it's probably substantially more than they need right now. If they've got a reservoir out there, they said it's continuously...
It will, they will have a reservoir or something, okay.
And that would be a saving factor too, because if they could build a big tower, and they get thirty-five gallons a minute, that's a lot of water per day. If you put a hundred thousand gallon tank out there, that's good storage.
I have a couple of questions out there, but first I'll motion that we go ahead and, um, approve this.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Each second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posts? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Something's up?
Can I ask about this, a couple of things related that were asked me that I couldn't?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, I wouldn't put it on the agenda, I just didn't have any space this weekend to get back to it, but, uh, the, the first one is, with the wells, people are asking, how, how does the city benefit? Because that, that property is outside of the city limits. So it's because it's in our aquifer that we benefit off the, the water payments? And is that how that works?
Well, we have the rights to the water. And so they have to either join up with us or get their own water rights. And getting their own water rights is extremely difficult to do.
It's impossible here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's just, there's not enough in Washington State. So we have seven hundred forty-nine acre feet, uh, that's a lot to us. And we don't even come close, we only need about a hundred or so. So we have a lot of extra water. So what they're buying through our water rights is out there, they're using our water.
So is that, do we charge them like we do people who live outside of the city limits? And then they get water, they pay, I don't know, not very much more? Is that the same thing, they'll get water, but have a little extra fee on that?
Yes, yes, and, and there's more things that will have to be discussed and decided about how things are gonna happen out there with the port. But the port will be coming to all of you to talk about the maintenance and how all of that's gonna look and work. Uh, so, but you are right about the water itself, that they will pay for that, like somebody who lives just outside of the city.
And another thing they'll be talking about, I don't think we even discussed it yet, is your septic system out there. And, uh, so are they gonna put a lagoon in, are they gonna put seppics in? I don't think they've discussed that yet. As buildings are being bought, you're gonna have to have a waste management. And then Stephen basically is gonna be running, fine running.
The way I understood it is every business at present is responsible for their own septic tank, yes, okay. And there won't be any city obligation to run that at this point, because they will be self-contained, okay.
There are a question I have, and I know I've asked this before, but, um, I wasn't able to explain the answer. Is, is it possible to annex that property so that more taxes are coming, like, from the businesses, if they're... So let's say three different industries going out, out there, they're selling products and stuff, so their taxes won't come to the city, right? That you go to the county?
Just county at this point.
At the county, so is there a way to annex them? Because the airport is annexed then, right?
Certainly, yes.
But, but is all the property between here and the airport annexed then?
No, and the conversation has occurred, and at this point, it's not advantageous. We can let it get over built and then access it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, so we could down the road when it's to our advantage.
Certainly.
Well, because, because someone who was reading, was reading through, and I hadn't gotten to the report, but the, the court's investing four million dollars into this project. So they obviously say, think that that's worthy to, to put that. And one of their reasons is to bring in, um, revenue to Tico. And they were asking me how that revenue is gonna come to us, and I wasn't... The fact that we're not annexed at this, or they're not annexed, but that would be part of it in the future.
And it's more northern Whitman County than just Tico. I mean, it does not put, I mean, at this point, doesn't put much in our pocket. However, those businesses will, you know, they've gotta live somewhere.
Right, and, and they'll leave here, and things like that. So I understand that, that, that's all part of it, so...
Yeah, there is real, there is no, uh, real benefit to annex them at this point, because if we're annexed, guess who gets to plow that road?
I guess who pays liability tax on it.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, we, we're, we're in a conversation right now about uh, who's, where, how is the water handled? Who takes care of that? And, I mean, so that's still kind of up in the air, and we're still having a discussion about who's...
Is this gonna have to be meters?
Uh, someplace, yeah. And they surely, they don't, if something blips, they don't wanna have to send their uh, maintenance guy from COFAX up to check on it.
That's what I think Stephen did, a lot for the...
Yeah, and...
It's something you'll have to...
Yeah, well, I know, and that, and so how is that compensated, or how is that dealt with?
Right, right.
Sorry, those are all conversations that have us contemplating the wee hours of the morning. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
You bet. Uh, did we pay that? We did vote on it, great. Anna Matthews, uh, Noise Ordinance, what do you got, bud? Welcome, by the way. You've got three minutes. Just see if you bite for it.
I, I'll take one, pass it down. I brought copies for everyone, except for Eric, so Eric, you get to play nice with the mayor. Otherwise, I don't have my copy.
Oh, I got one.
I'm not a legislator anyway, so... Alright, so, um, this is a petition that I have, um, first, and I'll just go through it as I walk through it. So this is a petition that I would like the council to consider to modify the current city or noise ordinance. Uh, so the noise ordinance is three point eight zero. In the current city noise ordinance, there is a lot of description about what is being noisy, what are nuisances to your neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. But there is no, there's nothing enforceable in that noise ordinance. It just says when you're being loud or being disruptive to a neighbor, but there's nothing... Like, if Mike goes out to go enforce something, there's nothing specific or measurable for him to go out and measure. And myself and some of my other neighbors over on Water Street and the surrounding area have had multiple issues with a particular neighbor with being really loud throughout the night, being loud during the day. And so as we were going through and talking about this as neighbors, I said I was gonna look into this a little bit more. So, skip the first couple pages. So, uh, after signatures on the petition, uh, there is a copy of the noise ordinance to show that there is definition of what noise is, a three point eighty point oh twenty talks about unlawful noise. There's unlawful refusal, there's examples. As I said, there is nothing about what is something that's actually enforceable. So behind that is a copy of Wa- Washington Administrative Code one seven three dash sixty dash zero three, which indicates that anything in excess of fifty-five decibels is considered a, is considered noise pollution and would be something that is specific and measurable that the city could adopt in the noise ordinance that could be something enforceable. So this is not something where noise is in my house and it's fifty-five decibels. It is noise coming from someone else's home or property that is reading at fifty-five decibels or above in my home or my property that is considered too loud. So, one seventy-three dash sixty dash thirty, in the highlighted portions, I've had, I have highlighted Class A, which stipulates where most of the city of Tico lives, which indicates as residential, which is where people live, reside, sleep, et cetera. They have other classifications for commercial, industrial places. So those noise levels are different, they have it broken down by after ten o'clock, what those noise levels would need to be broken down. They have noise levels broken down on the following page after that. Page before, following that, there is, or one seven three dash sixty dash ninety on the following page talks about how the law could be enforced. It talks about going out and purchasing a sound level meter. I'm researching this, because I thought about purchasing one for myself there. On Amazon, they range anywhere from twenty-five to two hundred dollars, depending on how fancy you want. And then I thought, we live in twenty twenty-five, we probably are past the point of this. And so, tech savvy, you can go onto your phone, you can look, and there are apps now that because of microphones on your cell phones, they, you can download an app on your phone because of the microphone on your phone. You can take live video on your phone that will track your GPS location, your current location, the date, the time, and it will read the current decimal reading, it will track averages, maximum level that it has detected over a certain time period, the minimum that has been detected, so you can have a good picture of what has or has not been detected. Following page is from the Department of Ecology, just to give, I had a couple of questions about what is, what's a baseline of what different noises are for different decimal ranges, so this is pulled directly from the Department of Ecology. So the council had an idea of what different noise levels look like. And then behind that is a study from the EPA, that's from March nineteen seventy-four, where this fifty-five decibel noise interference and too noisy number has come from, and so this isn't anything new, it's been around for over fifty years. And so, and then at the break front, I went around, talked to some neighbors, went around to the community, and have a comfortable fifty signatures, just to show that it's not just me with a concern with a particular neighbor, there is community support behind this measure, so I'm just coming to the council to ask, one, that we adopt anything in excess of fifty-five decibels as something that is specific and measurable that can be enforced onto the current existing noise ordinance as it is written. Two, I would ask that we publish something in the city newsletter so that there is a written notice to everyone in the community. So it is not an ordinance that is passed or amendment that is passed that no one knows about. It's something that is given to everyone. Why, as I've mentioned multiple times in these meetings, the expense and the cost of everyone getting these, their city utility bills and the newsletter, so we're gonna be, if we're gonna be paying for that, I would love to see this notice go out there. So everyone is given that notice. And I'd like to have Mr. Boganree have something specific and measurable, so he doesn't get a complaint, say, actually, I don't have a real solid way of following through with this.
What, what's the biggest noise problem?
Uh, at this, at the current time, we have a particular neighbor who is, has started with noises. It started with noises being played middle of the night. I, and middle of night, two, three o'clock in the morning, different things. There are multiple neighbors with this particular neighbor who it's gotten to the point where we've talked with Mr. Boganree. We've wrote a couple of complaints that's gone to, that's gone through the judicial system, that's gone through court. It, there are now some, there's now some stuff that has been court ordered. Um, unfortunately, you guys have talked about the sheriff a couple of times. Unfortunately, all of us on that side of town are very familiar with the sheriff when it's come to noise pollution and sound pollution over there. And there've been multiple complaints against that particular neighbor with noise, he's bought guitars and amps that he'll just sit and play to, in his words, scare away cats that are going onto his property and destroying some of his personal property on his porch, to light noise machines that are being played, obscene hours of the night, loud radio new stuff that's being played. And when we've approached him to say, hey, it's a little loud, can you turn it down? It's been not approached well, and been pretty vulgar and inappropriate, which is why there's been other things through the court system, and unfortunately, that hasn't ended the problems. They have, he's now going through the grade and going through different things. And speaking with the judge and the sheriff, they, their next suggestion was to come to you guys and see if there is something in this noise ordinance that can be possibly amended. So there is some additional steps that they can take to unfortunately continue that process, or hopefully show this particular... show this particular individual and their family that we are following the steps that need to be taken and some things will continue to happen if they choose to proceed as they are choosing to proceed.
So is he playing outdoors or indoors?
He is inside of his house, but there is a speaker one, on one porch and a speaker on the other end of the porch with different music playing at all different times. And to give specific examples, current rates, we are sitting averaging mid sixties with a peak of seventy eight one night to eighty eight the following day in the middle of the day. So if you look at your packet, eighty eight sitting in our bedroom with doors closed, eighty eight would sit about the equivalent of listening to a blender going.
Not going.
So, Anna, first of all, very well done, thank you for making this really easy to follow and giving us lots of good information here. To think this through, so, uh, I'm looking at that list you have, where the blender and the airport kickoff and all of those. So if, if we were to set it at anything above fifty five, and I look at a lawnmower here, it's a hundred decibels. I mean, I mean, obviously, we're not going to.
Oh, no, I, I think it's, I think it's about what is reasonable and what is harassment and obnoxious, I think if your neighbor's going out and they're mowing their lawn, that's reasonable, but if it's, you've had normal conversations with the neighbor, they are continually repeatedly doing things and being rude and disrespectful about it, you've taken multiple approaches behind it and attempt to be neighborly and have good conversation and they continue down the path that they are choosing to go down, that is past the point of being neighborly and civil, and that's, it's at the path, point of harassment. And so, like if someone does, has one or two things out of the blue and you reach out to them and say, hey, notice this was a little bit loud, is there something going on, can I help you? And they said, oh, yeah, kid did this or something else, that'd be one thing, that's a, neighbors talk to each other, you figure things out, that's what Tico's about, we help each other out, we find a solution with one another. This unfortunately is eighteen months of a failure to reach a conclusion and a compromise between multiple neighbors.
So this gives Mike something when he goes out.
Specific and measurable to say, hey, you were violating the noise ordinance, specifically the portion that says here, where it is in excess of this in this person's yard at this time.
Like, and I could.
One question, so three, the, the current three point eight zero point four zero B, frequently repetitive or continuous sounds made by the use of any musical instrument, radio, television, stereo, semi amplifier, or other stolen device which will annoy or disturb any person or persons residing in the vicinity. Is, why can't he enforce that?
Because what, and I bring that up because when we went to court, I asked that specifically, that is something that a judge can make an argument with, but code enforcement, he can someone can go and say, well, what's harassment to one person isn't harassment to someone else, and it comes down to, again, something specific and measurable that we can say, yes, this is something in our ordinance that is too loud, there's been, if you, Mike says, have you talked to him, has there been any communication between you guys about this back and forth, you can say, here's my documentation back and forth. So it also is gonna take some part on us as neighbors and community members to show, hey, we have tried this multiple times ourselves, it's still not being done, I don't just say someone's being loud, call Mike first time and just say, Mike, come and yell at them because they're breaking the rules. We need to do our part as community members and as neighbors to reach out to one another first and try the neighborly Tico approach.
Has Mike talked to him about it before?
Multiple times.
Yes, and then you say it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
And then they want, they want, they went to court, the judge says not enough evidence?
Oh, no, the judge enforced stuff and there's enforcement for speci- certain things, but not enough, and so the next clarification they said was to put something specific and measurable for the gray areas, and this was one of the particular gray areas was continuing stuff after the ten o'clock to six AM time period. That is continued, that is continuous ongoing.
So the WAC WAC laws cover some of this stuff, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So can the sheriffs, that's.
Sheriffs.
Hold it, that's not our ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
But that WAC doesn't apply to, it might just apply to, it, it's a Washington.
It might apply to Cohen Owen?
No, it applies just, like, a lot of times WACs are just regulations that administrative agencies regulate for, they don't apply to cities at all. It applies to something specific that, it, it could be an EPA or, or or, you know, um, environmental, I'm trying to think, yeah, that kind of stuff. It's, Washington agencies write their own regulations that apply to themselves, it doesn't really, they're not laws that apply to cities and municipalities, you have to, like, for example, the noise ordinance is what applies to Tico, not a WAC.
So we would have to put a decibel thing in there?
That's, that's what you have to amend this, and then you have to, it's a, having, it's kind of a subjective one right now, so it would have to have a decibel reading and that one to be objective, but then the other thing is, and I, this has come up before, is, I think even if you have a decimal reader, that, you have to have some kind of like calibration and certification for to be done as well to make sure it's objective, because otherwise you're gonna get the same problem where maybe someone has a decimal reader that says one thing, but someone's phone or app says a different thing, so you have to have some kind of calibration and certification, I think there's costs, won't that?
Well, that's something we can work on in the future, but if this is reworded to where there's a decibel thing in there, that would give Mike some fire to do something?
Well, he could take his decimal reading, get a reading from that, and that would be his evidence, and he'd have a notice to enforce it, but then, of course, like, what Shelley pointed out is, if you have a certain reading, if it's like a lawnmower, that, that means that technically that could be a violation.
Yeah, so it's just like what he was saying, you know, a lawnmower or whatever, it's run during period of time during the day, it doesn't run all night long and all day.
And, and that's what you're talking about.
Duration has, has to factor into that.
Duration, duration has a good, duration and time has a big part in this, and I also don't want to come across like I shouldn't be vindictive with dignity or anything like that, it's it's at the point where it's like, we, we just want to see some resolution, which is why I'm like, can we, also, it's part of why I'm asking that it be published in the newsletter, so there's a written application, because you know, we all bought our, buy our homes, we all expect to be able to go home and relax and enjoy the peace of our homes and that's really what myself and a lot of our neighbors want, is we want to be able to go home and enjoy the peace and sanctity of our homes and if you're unable to do so, it feels not, it feels unsafe and unsavory and it puts a real mental burden on stuff.
And you're asking, this is enforceable between ten at night and six or seven in the morning?
I'm asking for it to be enforceable twenty-four seven. So between ten and seven, there's according to the WAC, the ten and seven, it's lowered an additional ten decibels. So it's only forty-five after ten and seven. But again, like, if I, if I read that, I want to just go, jump straight to, oh, I'm gonna call Mike the first time it happens, I'm gonna reach out to my neighbor first time and say, hey, this is happening, is there something going on, how can I help you? It's, for me, it's you need to have a pattern and a, and a consistency and a duration behind something before you would reach out to Mr. Bogengreev, write a complaint to the city or to the sheriff for that matter.
What were the gray areas?
The lack of speci- specific decimal level, there was specifics for during ti- timeframes, specifics on decimal levels or anything that they can say, well, what is too loud? That was pointed out multiple times, what is too loud?
So we had problems with this before, seems like up in your area, uh, in the past, we've had problems with sporadic.
Yeah, not, and we sprout.
Yeah, well, Mike said the same thing, they just were, knocked it off and they wouldn't. And, uh, but it seems like if we had something more for Mike to go on, that Mike could reinforce a little bit more.
And there's gonna be exemptions in this for construction and other types of.
Oh, no, in, in, in the WAC, it's, there is exemptions for residential and commercial areas as well.
You have to have a reasonable decimal level, like you said, ten to seven. I've been a lot of places where you, basketball, bouncing, any noises after ten, not a lot for people to sleep, so you need that, or, I don't know, about forty-five, we need certainly.
Even if it was just fifty-five.
Yeah, I mean, if you gotta have some during that time, then more during the day, a lawnmower. The biggest noise I hear from my office is airplanes blowing my house, but that's, that's.
Well, that's a bigger mouthwash than the airplane.
Oh, see, there's no sense, how worse is sensitivity, Mike?
So I, I guess where we're at is ask the sheriff to, uh, see what would?
I, I get really spooked about writing an ordinance for one specific case.
Well, I, I think.
Because that's what we're, that's what we're doing now.
No, well, I think.
Right?
No, I think it's just happened quite a bit, uh, during your area too.
Yes, somebody's living off the paid vomit nights.
I know.
And I don't know who's doing that, but that's waking people up. We do, we need something like this, because.
It's like, you could add the fireworks in it too, I guess.
Well, using common sense.
Because Mike wanna know what the cost is gonna be as well for enforcing that.
I don't know.
It would be the purchase of a a reader, basically.
There'd be a purchase of one, and for, and I, and I thought, and it's, like I said, it's been a while since when this has come up, when I've done, um, for some other cities, I've done noise ordinance before, it's always what, do you go with the objective, this objective noise ordinance? And I recall, I thought, it was, like I said, it's been a while, but I thought there was more of a cost than came with enforcing the objective one, and I don't. Actually, like I said, I didn't.
But even if you're looking at, this is just one, but it is, it's harassment. Because this neighbor up above, he complains about it, and one that lives in Faye's house, they complain about it, because he's got an aircraft line out there shining in his house. Yet, it isn't one individual at the moment, and so they're trying to live their lifestyle, and this guy's just.
Harassment.
I guess that's the best way to put it.
Well, I can think of other neighborhoods on the other side of the highway in the past that have had some issues too, I don't know, of late, but, um, so but I guess my question is, is fifty-five a little low? Because, I mean, I'm looking at, um, you know, like, constant going, okay, but office noise is around sixty, sixty-five, it says breathing's only ten, so I guess we're good there. Um, but, uh, a blender's ninety, uh, and, and I guess if you're running your blender for a bit, someone's just running a blender normal, but even like TV noises and stuff, I know as we are getting older and then people walk by our sidewalk, which, you know, just a few feet from our living room, you can hear our TV, and it gets a little louder every few months as our ears are. And I'm just think, I mean, I just don't want to create something where people are going to like now nitpick about their neighbors and, and things like that, but something, you know.
Oh, no, that's, that's for you guys, I am just making a proposal based off of what the current WAC is, if you guys as the council decide, hey, you know, we feel fifty-five is too low, we feel sixty or sixty-five is more appropriate, then by all means, as a council, you guys can adopt what you think would be more appropriate.
Eric, could you be able to put some ideas together for us and say, our second meeting in December, we can discuss this, and then after we get through our budget stuff and other stuff, we've got a chance to read all this and see what you come up with?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Can we put on the agenda for the second meeting in December, please?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
There should be tons of ordinances, full of, they should have noise ordinances, but I tend to say with, with Roy, he he is a little nervous about starting to organize, see, become a specific problem. One particular problem, not that there isn't others, but you gotta make sure it encompasses a larger area in town, not just one. And besides, uh, you know, Mike spent that scum to court and, um, and I saw what was on. So the question is, what's the next step, and if you say, yeah, sixty decibels, well, he gets the same process. It's still sixty, goes to court, judge says, don't do that. All you can do is let be fines on him, that's the only thing you can do.
Well, even with the decimals, all you can do is let be fines on him too.
Yeah, I don't think he's had a fine, and that's the question. You, if you start levying fines, that is a way of changing your attitude quickly.
Either way, whether it's this one you didn't enforce or decimal one max, you just let be fines against them.
Yeah.
I just, I, I would think, though, the, the way that the ordinance is not, if you had like declarations from a lot of neighbors saying, yeah, this is what I hear, and it's disturbing me. You have like several of those in addition to the ordinance, that would help the judge say, yeah, this is obviously, it's not just a he said, she said, this is a problem here.
That's kind of what it's wired into.
Yeah, so, so I, like, I, like I said, I sometimes with enforcement, if you don't have, if, if you have a preponderance of the evidence standards you have to meet, and if you don't meet that preponderate standard, it can be hard to enforce no matter no matter what ordinance you have in place, so.
So, is there to see what other cities might have or not are done?
Is it deteriorating Adam, or is it leveling out, or is it getting better?
Sporadic. Since court has been sporadic, the sheriffs are up, tried by, on a frequent basis. And by a frequent basis, I'd say minimum twice a week.
Those are the ones you see daily?
That must be.
Because I said.
Are they headed, they're headed to days.
Yep, they're totally heading for days, that's it.
So is there anything that could be done about the bright lights, I mean, the lights on the soccer field? Oh, jeez.
Um, so.
Yes.
The ones pointed at my house were addressed specifically, but the, the rest would have to be handled at a court level, because specific court order I have are only for us, and that would have to be brought up by those specific people, because that is the purview that the judge told us specifically.
So they would have to go and take care of this, this shining right into their bedrooms, right?
Wow, that would be a fun day going in.
We'd be good. You got mirrors? I mean, here's like a map, okay, I think we chewed this up.
I will confirm, I will not confirm nor deny, so I can't like on anything.
Let us try to keep the city, I mean, yeah, up to date on any movement one way or another, so we can kind of, and I'm gonna talk to Mike on this thing, find out, get his his gut on it, what he, what he thinks, and if it's you know, if it's not enforceable, and if all we do is write tickets, I don't know how that helps. Sometimes it just might make you madder, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying.
Hold on, I.
Right?
I'm just.
I mean, it's like giving a warning to speakers.
Now, all I can do is ask.
Yes.
And I appreciate that.
I'm following, I'm following current processes, so that I can track the attempt and I can track all the other stuff for other attempts, actually.
Good luck.
Unfortunately.
But the thing is, if we have a thing in the ordinance, this may be just one time, but it may come up against another time, so I think we need to get started in doing this and pushing this forward. So we have this in the future.
Well, I'm assuming these ordinances were put into place when we had our own police department. And our own police department could enforce this.
Some of these ordinances, I think, were done.
This was ninety-seven. So we have our own police.
So you have Mike to enforce it now, right?
That's, that's the avenue.
Yeah.
And, I'm not.
And we can talk, like, also, there's prosecuting them too, which is another.
That's a whole nother animal, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they're expensive.
Yes, and, and there's.
Well, yeah.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, uh, mayor's report, um, about, by the way, the grader's done, got fixed. It will return hopefully before the week that I went with the, um, screen inside the transmission.
Really?
Yep. Well, I'm assuming the wheels have come off to get, get access to it. It's probably gonna cost us as much to haul it up there and back as it costs us to fix it, so yeah, we're in pretty good shape, so, that one.
So just on that note there, did they say how often that filter chamber changes or anything?
Probably once, maybe more than once every fifteen years. Okay, that's a, alright, so it, it's probably as good as we're all gonna be, well, some of us aren't gonna be around. So, okay, um, let's see, I was trying to think, we've got a meeting with Kim from Ecology tomorrow to talk about this whole funding package, uh, trying to think of what else we've got going on, a lot, at all avenues, um, been in contact with Matt, I believe, uh, Stephen got a bid for the MB, MBR.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah.
Package plant?
The package plant that he forwarded on to Century West. We went through the treatment plant last Friday, with Century West, they were down last Friday. I've been through the treatment plant before, but never quite like that, um, and it was, um, quite there's a lot there, there's a lot, and, and from the minute I saw it from the time it comes into the time limit is at the end, and, um, there's a lot there, there is a lot to keep another girl running, and, so, um, Century West had a lot of questions, comments, they're sure they'll be getting back to us pretty quick with some, um, new presentations and stuff like that. Okay, ma'am, do you have anything for me?
I do, um, we were awarded the cyber security grant, uh, it's about fifty-three thousand dollars, and it's not the state, but it's federal money, so the state portion's done, and we, they awarded that to us, but now it has to go to the federal portion, so, um, I have to ask a few questions, it's, I know it's renewable over five years, but I'm I'm not sure if the fifty-three thousand dollars is lit up over five years, or if there are certain things that they cover upfront, and then some of the things we can do over five years, so it's to get some new computers for shop in the office, and to pay for some of our subscriptions, like the one for PC three, which is the cyber security we have that subscription up and up, uh, but the big deal is that it will pay for our software, which is huge, that's like thirteen thousand dollars a year, so at least for a minute, you know, we can breathe a little bit more, if that's, that's great, and I'll let you know when I know more, that'll be
Okay, anything else, that's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I let you know about water out.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, once again, these are reports, Mike?
Nothing.
Dan? Charlie?
Um, well, just a couple of things that are coming up before the end of the month, so, um, Small Business Saturday, I'm not sure how many years, about a dozen years or, or more that they've done that, and so this year, um, is it Mary Genshinmas or something, and, uh, the businesses have been doing a really great job, uh, that you, you might have seen around town, the, there's a, like, not a punch card, but a list of some of the businesses, you go to business in there, you check those off, or they stamp them for you, I think you have the whole month to do that, and, uh, then that goes into a drawing, I believe, so, so there's that happening. Uh, the Giving Tree this year is being called the Wishery, and you might see some posters around, but it's the same idea. And I believe there's information, or you can, uh, contact Sam Anderson up at the high school about information, if there's a family or anybody listening to this, or if you know somebody who, uh, might need some extra assistance, uh, they would wanna get hold of Sam and get to be part of the Giving Tree, uh, and she, I think she had something posted the other day that really explained it, um, really well, so, uh, I noticed the movie has moved to four o'clock this year, so they're trying something a little bit different, and doing the tree lighting earlier, and so, people come out for Small Business Saturday, it's a really important thing for our, um, business district. And I think all my other questions got answered earlier, so.
Could you confirm the date of that?
It is Saturday, the
Twenty-first, twenty-ninth? Okay, and, um, would you please say people can be part of the Giving Tree with Sam at
At the high school.
Sam Anderson. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, Steve?
Um, regarding the demonstration signs, I'm still looking for some laminated photos of some train dreams, you know, that's, um, movie episode, that's partially filmed in Tico, number of people got it, Spokane have seen it, and said it's pretty quite good, and a number of people in Spokane are just thrilled about the movie, and they're groupies, and so, it's some real potential for the town to bring people here, and I'm looking for someone to put it in these, uh, uh, these demonstration signs, and, but also some Christmas pictures that would demonstrate the season. So, working on those, getting them laminated, getting them up by, uh, Small Town Saturday, Small Business Saturday. So anyway, it, uh, working on, but train dreams has some real potential, among other things, and I talked to some people, and I said, they've seen it, like it, nobody's all crazy about it here, but a lot of other places are. I think it's the greatest thing ever.
But it's supposed to be on Netflix, is it the twenty-first of November?
Twenty-first.
It's It's in Moscow next weekend.
It was shown as a magic lantern last week.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. I had friends that went, and it was very, the photography was beautiful.
But they did say that the inside of the theater, all the time we spent, most of that was cut out. The theater show, and the street, and a lot of the stuff, and, and the, and the Mercury Hill store, but they had all that work in the theater, I mean, we spent hours in there.
Yeah, they captured in there, come in there, so
Yeah, and then they go over there, end up on the floor.
All right, why don't you bring that up?
So, you know, we talked about the, the, uh, what about the city shop, is there any update on that, with itself?
Oh, um, so I called today to see where things were, and rounded up to even email Marcus, um,
Wow.
Can he please just update us on, uh, the banking, because he, the last I know, he had asked us for a copy of the market analysis, to see if the bank would accept that, uh, in lieu of, in a crazy and I don't know the answer to that, and so I'm just asking him to update me, but it usually takes a little bit to get back to me, so.
So did we quote them on him, Bryson, a minimum?
Yes, according to the market analysis, that was done.
And he wasn't satisfied with that?
Um, I don't know about that, I know he wanted to get financing on it, uh, and so he has to meet whatever requirements the bank has, but I don't know what that is, so that's why I'm just inquiring where things are in process.
Yeah, good, yeah, I got a couple of things. The budget committee, uh, has talked about it, and, uh, what they would like to do on the code enforcer, and I think we really need to do it, we need to have a timesheet from the code, the code enforcer, what is he doing with the time that he out? And instead of just paying whatever we're paying a month, we need to have verification of what he has been doing for work. Um, you know, has he been two hours chasing, uh, Adam Matthews at neighborhood, or whatever it may be? You need to fill out a timesheet showing what he does for that month, same with the building inspector. And, uh, so, um, I think that will give us an idea of, um, how we're gonna approach, um, the code enforcer, um, where, uh, we need to see more done. If he comes in once a month, quarter, or whatever, or sends us a timesheet in every month. And also, we talked about, um, the theater, uh, and so, um, and I'll get with Mike on that, because I think we gotta sit down, he brought up a pretty good idea, what, uh, old, old buildings or whatever, so, we might be able to look into something where, where we can get some grant money on that. But I do think, uh, and this is just something we're gonna discuss, uh, with, with the council, that the city needs to help out with that theater, and, uh, so that's our thing on that. And, uh, so, uh, Mike and I will get together after the first year, where we, we're talking about all the budgets and things like that, and start getting into what we need to have updates for, uh, that building down there. So, that's what I have on that.
All right. Um, at this point, is there any reason why we need to go to executive session? Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the vouchers and claims, which are, do we have it this time, or not?
Yeah.
They're working, they're working.
Can you kindly ask, I asked last time, is it possible to, once a month, have the budget position and the credit card statements included in our packets, and forward?
Um, I'm happy to put the budget position in there, we don't normally put individual bills in with the council packets, but they're available in this, and it's, I guess I feel a little bit awkward putting those into the, they, those go out to the newspaper and everything, so.
Well, it's all public records, right?
It is, but we typically don't throw all of those bills, you know, out there, people can always come in and look at them, so
Oh, well, I mean, I, I asked to see the last, from December to current, and I've been here back, I know you can really see this stuff, too. So, um, I just, I, I don't know, it's, so they are in there for us, though, again?
Yeah, every month, they're in there.
I mean, and there's just so much, it's a luxury, and
Yeah, I understand.
Essentially, every, every time you wanna see them, I mean, you won't make them
Well, I mean, I, I even asked if I could get proof of anything, anything back, so, I mean, for me to come down, it's pretty tough. Then my work schedule, to get down here and kinda look at them, so they can't be emailed out to us?
I feel, we, we've talked about it, and we, we're not very comfortable in doing that, I mean, they're here, Mike's here, he goes through them, if you wanna come down and go through them with him, that's, that's, you can certainly do that, but I prefer that they stay within the building, because we lose, um, we, we lose, we lose sheets over now, and then, well
Well, I mean, you've got a copy of them, and I don't understand why we can't have a copy of them that are, and, I, I guess, you know, I'm still, that conversation I had with, uh, um, auditor's office earlier this year, you know, just really saying, guys, do your job, you, you know, you, you got great people, but do, do your jobs, so you're not leaving them, people speculating, and you have a right to look at any of the financial records, and, um, so, I just, um, I, I feel like I'd like to see them.
Sure, you can see them, they'll be here, you can see them.
So you're not gonna put them in our files?
Yeah.
Eric, is it, any thoughts, I mean, can we have them as a file of packets?
Just the other one, you can look at them, I mean, I don't, I don't
So I have to come down, you're not, you won't need to, you know, I have to come down.
Yep, yep, at this point, sure, man.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll talk about it, we can do a little more.
The council can have a motion if you wanna make this, how important is it for the council to decide?
Well, I just, I, I just, I don't understand why we can't see what's being spent, I mean, we, the budget committee was one thing, was trying to understand, you know, what, what the outflow, why wouldn't we wanna see, it's like, there's nothing to hide, so why would we not share what the expenditures are?
One concern is that, once the information goes out into the public, there's been a really large problem with people misinterpreting what they see, they don't call us to ask what things are, they don't clarify, it just goes out there, and the next thing we know, we're totally under fire for this, that, and the other thing, and most of it's not even factual.
Well, I guess, and otherwise, if that's why I'm trying to bring it here, then we can ask specifically, so I guess I just need to, so I have to come down sometime during workday, which I work, and I have to look at them, and then bring it to our attention and ask you specific questions about them, because I think if, if we see and we address, like, oh, why did, why was this spent? Oh, well, okay, that makes sense, then, then it diffuses, things getting out in the public, I mean, at least that's why I'm thinking about it. I
Okay, it's my decision, and we just decided to keep them here. Okay, we're, we're here, they're here till four thirty, five o'clock every night, okay?
We went to the school a lot long, and
Certainly, okay, fine, okay, this is, that's my decision at this point, so, okay?
Okay, well, well, okay.
Okay.
And hopefully, it discusses a little more later, I'm not sure why we couldn't have that.
All right, you need to find out more information, so
Well, I think all you're gonna do is get a whole bunch of public records requests from people now, wanna know why they, why, why it's a mystery, so I just think you're creating a bigger problem for yourself, right, but I hope I'm wrong.
I'm just, I, we've got a, uh, financial officer that goes through them, at any point, if, if you want to go through them, I think Mike could probably meet you at some point.
Yeah, but you, that thing is, the whole council, Mike has no more authority than any other council member, or more right than any other council member to see any financial records.
Look, they're in there. Okay?
Okay, no, I think it's
At this point, I'll accept the motion to approve the bills.
I make the motion to approve the bills.
Moved, second.
Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
I'm not saying.
Everyone extension, and at this point, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. I make a motion, please go on. Mike moved, second, Mike second, David, Mike second. All the favors say aye?
Aye. But while this is ended, I, I think that we need to really look at the credit cards, because we're told up with the state, yeah.